Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Rockland School Committee meeting of May 23, 2022. First on tonight's agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes of our May 9, 2022 meeting. We'll be entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. That is a vote. Item three on tonight's agenda is audience. We have a couple of members of, we have a couple of groups of folks who were very excited to have here with us tonight. First, we have the Rockland High, we have Rockland High School teacher Kristen Walsh and students Mary McPartlin, Lily McLaughlin, and Mary Kate Leon Cavalo to share about their Belize and Greece took that they took with us. Welcome.
Thank you. How was everyone?
Excellent.
We have a couple changes on the names because of sports tonight.
Oh, okay.
Some track runners and lacrosse players that couldn't make it. Mary is here, and then this is Senior Jill Mitchell, who also went to Greece with us.
Hi Jill, hi Mary.
They were nice enough to join us to share their experiences tonight. Travel Club is back. We had two great trips this spring in February and April, and wanted to bring you a couple of the stories and pictures from it. February vacation Kendra Donovan, who's another high school English teacher, and I took nine students for 10 days turned, or turned into 10 days. We had a little bit of February weather get us home a little bit late, but everyone was a trooper, handled it really well, and we got home safe. We saw so many wonderful things like the ruins and snorkeling. It was a really adventurous trip, a little different from some of our sightseeing that we've done before. Mary's going to tell you a little bit more about it in a minute. Everybody had such great enthusiasm and so open to learning, and it was a different culture for all of us, seeing Belize and learning about it that we didn't know very much about. So that was a wonderful trip. Some of the highlights picture-wise, there's Mary with butterflies all over her at a butterfly garden. We also did some cave tubing, which was really a beautiful, perfect day. We ziplined through the jungle and then got to go on the tubes that you see on the right and sort of float through the caves down a river. They got to swim and jump in and see stalagmites and bats and all the things you expect to see in a cave, but it was pretty beautiful. I think I skipped one too fast at the clicker. The beach we stayed on in the bottom picture, we were right on the beach. The snorkeling boat picked us up in a dock at our hotel, which was a pretty relaxed experience for all of us. We had a wonderful tour guide. The snorkeling was amazing. After going to Australia, I would say it was better in Belize than Australia. So that's saying something. It's the Great Barrier Reef. We saw sharks, turtles, rays. What am I forgetting?
A lot of fish.
Lots of different kinds of fish, but a wonderful day of snorkeling. And then obviously hiking the ruins, we did several times. In the middle, that's Junior Isa de Filippo with our tour director Matthew, who they all really enjoyed. He gave her one of his Belizean soccer jerseys to bring home when he found out she played soccer here at Rockland High. So great tour. I don't know if at the end you want to ask the ladies questions after I go over both groups, but Greece was a little more recently. Giulia Di Canzio, another high school teacher, came with me and nine Rockland students. We were also joined by two students from Boston Latin School, whose trip had been canceled, and they traveled with us, which was wonderful. So the students got to make friends with them, as well as the students from Utah that were joined with us. We did Athens at the beginning and end, and then traveled to Crete, the largest island in Greece, and it was absolutely beautiful. We had perfect weather, easy sailing, amazing food. They got to do a cooking class and become experts. Jill's team beat my team quite a bit. They did Greek dancing at an evening where they got to learn traditional steps and costumes, and everything we went to was just so beautiful. The people of Belize and Greece were so welcoming and wonderful, and glad to have tourists back, I think, but really open to teaching the students things, and glad they were on an educational tour as well. And some of the pictures, there's, I wish MK didn't have lacrosse tonight because there's her in the costume on the left, dancing with one of our students from Boston, and then that's the Temple of Poseidon on the right. Jill can share what was happening in the picture on the left, but the surprised expressions are, you want to tell them?
Fish pedicures.
They did fish pedicures.
Wait, fish pedicures? How do fish, they don't have feet? How do they get pedicures?
They're eating all the dead skin off of our feet.
Some of the funniest faces I've ever seen students make is when they first put their feet in the tank, but most of our students, I would say, did that at one point or another during the Greece experience.
How was that? Was that pretty cool?
Yeah, I had done it before. I had one on a family vacation, so I knew what to expect.
Wow.
A lot of my friends did it.
Yeah, we have some good photos that I did not put up there for their sake. And then, I don't know if you're in that picture, I can't see sideways Jill, but that was at Delphi. We went to the ruins of Delphi, and it was a rainy day, but once you got up to the top, it was so beautiful. The Oracle of Delphi, the guide there, told us so many amazing stories. She was actually the Rick Steves toured, tour guide, so if you ever watch any of Rick Steves' Exploration of Greece, she's the guide in that. So we had a really cool experience that day. And then the bottom is in Crete, in Hania, which was this amazing town we stayed in at the end. I loved that all of our hotels were in places we could really explore. They weren't kind of off in the middle of nowhere, so with really trustworthy students and the ability to say you have an hour here to go explore, they were able to see architecture and local shops, and there were fortresses, and just beautiful places that they got to kind of get lost on purpose in a small area, and it was nice. And then there's a picture of the group with our tour director Pablo, who's been with Rockland High groups for years. I think there's a little bit of a battle between if Matthew or Pablo was better between the two groups this spring. And I think that is the end of my slide, so I don't know if anyone has any questions for the ladies.
Questions for my colleagues? Mrs. Maroni.
Well, first of all, we're jealous that you got to go and travel. How exciting for you. But if you were going to talk to an eighth grader or a freshman coming up, what would you say is the best part of traveling?
For me, it was getting closer to everybody you went with. I didn't know Ms. Walsh or Ms. Donovan or any of the juniors, and now I see them in the hallway, and I talk to them, and I visit her after school, and I'm taking Ms. Donovan's AP English next year, and I would never have done that if I didn't know them through travel.
And journalism with me.
And journalism with me.
I can definitely agree with her. I met some kids from Boston Latin that I had never known before, or Utah, and even I, I love our tour director. I love the, all the places we visited, so it's definitely a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I would do it again if I could.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to add, I think it's great that you guys had the opportunity to go see places that most people never have the chance in their lifetime to go to. Realistically, you have between high school and a few short years after your college age to really explore before kids, family, other commitments really start to come up. So it's great that you guys took advantage of those, this opportunity that Ms. Walsh and her team have brought to high school.
I would just like to thank them and the rest of their peers who came with us on both tours, because after a few years off with COVID, they couldn't have been better groups to make us feel confident in following the COVID protocols. We already trusted EF, and then seeing the students just really step up to do whatever was needed and be really flexible and adaptable was awesome. It made it so much easier for us, and we're so confident moving forward now. Hopefully, things will only get better, but we know we can do it in the circumstances we're under, so it was wonderful.
I just have one more question. So with the delay, how was it working with EF for those two days?
It was okay.
Yeah.
They did the best they could. It was an impossible situation. We had never traveled in February, so weather doesn't usually come into play in April or the summer tours. And I think if all flights out of the South are canceled because of weather in the Northeast, even if EF wants to get us home as quickly as possible, it's not always the immediate solution we would like. But they, we did eventually get hotels and transportation and all the things that were guaranteed under their protection plan. It just took a little longer because there were no flights.
Right.
So we had to stay in Miami, stay in Belize an extra night, Miami a night, and then Pittsburgh a night. So everyone was really just good attitudes about it. I think we would have loved to have been home sooner. Definitely made me rethink the February travel a little bit. It was an experiment that worked out great weather-wise in Belize, just not so much traveling from New England. So we'll see moving forward about if there's a way to plan for that, but sometimes weather just gets in the way.
So that's still my question. I was going to ask you a little bit about, just a little bit about that, and you kind of nailed what I was going to ask, just about how EF was to work for when you had a curveball thrown your way. Obviously, you can't control the weather. You can have contingencies and itineraries and all kinds of things that you're doing in your planned time, but I was going to ask you just what you explained about sort of what your experience was with EF and how you were supported with them and travel plans, and it sounds like that was really great, and I imagine ladies at Pittsburgh must have been just the best part of this trip, right?
After spending a night in the Miami airport, they were very happy to be in a hotel at Pittsburgh, so we didn't see much of the city, but the hotel was very nice.
Were you able to fill your time okay while you were stuck there? Did you find some things to do in Miami?
Yeah, it was like the funniest night of my life, though. So it really was. They made up for it.
They had a lot of games, a lot of card games in Uno and things like that, and we explored the Miami airport probably more than most people have. But I couldn't have asked for a better group. Not one person complained. No one was impatient or a problem for the chaperones, because they were all just great travelers about it. So we're really appreciative of that.
Anyone else?
Well, the pictures are fabulous. I think I follow you on Twitter, so I saw them real time. Could you ladies maybe share one of your favorite adventures that you did? And maybe favorite food? And would you go back to the places that you visited, just, you know, finally seeing the different cultures?
My favorite was definitely snorkeling. I'd done it once before, but in Belize, it's just something totally different, and you see literally every animal in that water. I ate a termite. That was...
A what?
A termite.
To put it in context, it was in a survivalist training kind of program. So they, they weren't, served it at a meal.
I was going to say, we got to work on that EF meal plan.
I was thinking, did it come through the snorkel?
Right out of the ground.
So that was really fun, but trying the new food was definitely awesome, and I would definitely go again if I could, so.
My favorite part was the free time we had. We got to explore a lot on our own without like having to be forced to do stuff. But I liked the Temple of Poseidon the most. It was the prettiest, and I think we had the best weather that day. It was like one of our last days. And my favorite food is definitely tzatziki. I come home and make it now all the time because of our Greek cooking class, and I would definitely 100% go back again.
I think both places offer so many more things that we didn't get to see in a short time. So that's one of my favorite things about running Travel Club, is that it makes them want to go back and see other places within Europe, within Central America, or just within the same country. We were supposed to originally go on an island cruise, and that, I had told you, had changed because of COVID, and I think it worked out for the better. We loved Crete. It was four days there. I feel like we saw all of Crete really in depth versus bouncing around island to island for a couple hours each day. So if we ever go back, any of us, we'll be able to see the other islands and have plenty of chance to do that, but I was really glad we got the opportunity to spend so much time in Crete.
Excellent. Anyone else?
I was just going to say thank you to Ms. Walsh. Obviously, this was a fabulous experience for these ladies, and I'm sure every other student who was on there, and it's a lot of work on your behalf, and I'm sure it's very well appreciated. And also, I hope that everybody went home and said a big thank you to their parents for getting them on the trip and for trusting you and your team for providing this amazing experience. The parents have always been really supportive and wonderful, and I know that the students appreciate it because not all towns have this, not all schools have this, and I can tell from their attitudes on the tour that they are appreciative and they want to get the most out of it. We're always proud of Rockland students on field trips, but I particularly see it on these international trips, looking at other groups that aren't with us, and ours are always the best behaved, the best listeners, the most respectful, and we can come back and say we're really proud of them, so.
Well, we share that we are also very proud of them. Great job. Glad you had a great time.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being with us tonight. Have a great rest of your year. Thanks, everybody. Okay, next on tonight's agenda, under audience number two, we have our WRPS manager and Rockland High School teacher, Mr. David Cable Murth Murphy with us here tonight. Welcome, Dave.
It's a tough act to follow. Nineteen years ago, almost to the day I'll retire, which will be the end of June, I came down to Rockland, and at that time, I don't think I'd been on a high school campus for 27 years since I graduated Revere High in 1976. And obviously, a lot had changed over that period. The thing, honest to God, this is the truth, that struck me the most at first, is that nobody smokes. I mean, if you walked by a men's room at Revere High in the mid-'70s, it was like a cloud of smoke pouring out, and that's the God's honest truth. One thing that has nothing to do with the timeframe is the sense of community here, and that really struck me. It's, maybe we hear, I wouldn't say we hear it too much, we hear it a lot, how unique Rockland is and the bulldog spirit. And I'm here to tell you, as a North Shore boy who didn't know Rockland, Maine, from Rockland, Massachusetts, when I started, there is a lot of truth to that, and it's something the town should be very proud of. Over the last couple of weeks, there've been a few occasions like this where people have been thanking me for my time and my service here, and I'd like to take a little bit of my time in turn to thank them, starting with Bill Compton, who hired me 19 years ago, and the administrative team subsequent to that, the school committee members who've served selflessly over the course of that time period. All very impressive. And I want to thank you for the opportunity and autonomy to do what we were able to do here at Rockland High. I really appreciate that. It's one of the reasons I stuck around as long as I did. The sense of respect and cooperation with anything I wanted to do was overwhelming. Poor choice of words, but it, again, one of the reasons why I stuck around as long as I did. I'd like to thank the teachers here in the building. You know, I wasn't a trained educator when I started. I had done some work, classroom work at Emerson, but watching the people in this building and their level of dedication and the way in which they nurture and educate the young people of this town was truly inspiring, and I take that as one of the best lessons leaving here, that education is okay, at least in Rockland, and I'm sure in an awful lot of other communities. We hear a lot of negative things from people who really don't know much about education, and I want to tell you that they're wrong, and my experience has borne that out here. I'd like to thank my staff. Mr. Bernika, Lisa Breeden, Seth Rozuski, two of whom are alumni of the program. That's something I'm very proud of. Dennis Carson, Alan, I don't know if you remember Dennis, if he had already left by the time you got here. He was the assistant station manager when I started, and he made my entry into life in Rockland much easier. Charlie Tilden, who did maybe, well, probably more than 800 meetings in the time he as a community member volunteered in Ryan Camerit football games, basketball games, these meetings, all for nothing. And his level of camaraderie, his good humor, his reliability were really incredible. I'd like to thank my wife, Jill, and our daughter Kate, without whose understanding about my crazy schedule and my ridiculous commute for 14 years, and they put up with it without batting an eyelash, you know, made it possible for me to stay here. Pretty much anything you have good to say about me as a result of the influence of Jill and Kate. As I said, it's been 19 years, and I just hope that the people in this building are as proud of what they do on a daily basis as I am of them. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to say a few words, and before I get any more choked up, I think I'll just call it quits there.
Before you do, I'd like to take a minute just to thank you. As an educator, number one, I think you said it best, is something to this place that we call home in Rockland, specifically the school department, the faculty, the team, the student community here. It's very unique. I didn't grow up here either. I grew up in a different place, and upon moving to Rockland, it's immediately recognizable, this thing that we described, Dave, and I think that you hit it hard, and you've been a big, you hit it perfectly, excuse me, and I think that you've been a big, huge part of that throughout your time here, not only in your role as an educator, but your role as an important member and vector in our community. You mentioned before the meeting that this was somewhere around 800 meetings that you've been a part of. The access to information and meetings and community policy that you've provided to people in this town is just, is amazing over the timeframe that you've done it. There's a lot to this. I mean, you can see it on TV when you're watching on a community access or on YouTube, and it seems so easy to click the meeting and just have it sort of pop up, and all of a sudden, you're in town, you're at a town meeting, or you're at a selectman meeting, or a school committee meeting, but there's a lot of planning and a lot of behind the scenes and a whole lot of work that goes into this. And it's never a blink of an eye. It always just works. It always just works, and it's been that way because of you and because of the way that you've educated the people that are here, working here for you now. I'm just so sad to see you go, I guess, but it's been about nine years that I've had the pleasure to know you, and I want you to know that I admire you and that I'm going to miss you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the, from the committee?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni.
I just wanted to thank you for your time here, for your heart and dedication. You can tell that it's a passion of yours, and you've brought it to all of us, and you have taught us to appreciate it and to let you do what you do best, and it just shows that it, it follows. Whatever we ask you, you get it to us, and we just can't say it enough. The passion, like I said, is huge for us. Your dedication, leaving your family at home, coming to us, always with a smile on your face, always doing whatever is needed to get it done. We just, we're going to miss you. We know you're going into greener pastures, but don't forget, this is home, and come on back and see us.
I will definitely do that.
And thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to say thank you for your dedicated service and enjoy your retirement.
I plan on it, Emily. Thank you.
I was going to say something similar. Just thank you for all that you have done, all your contributions, the seamless, seamless operations of this studio and many other audiovisual things here are all as a result of your hard work. So thank you for all of that, and also enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
I guess I'll say thank you. Enjoy your retirement, too. They've all said it so eloquently. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just take this opportunity publicly to say thank you, Dave, for everything. You know, every educator who works here brings certain qualities and experiences, and we all add something to this community. And you've brought to us your 20 years at Emerson, and this studio is because of you. These programs that exist are because of you. And all, I know that you've done 800 meetings, but that's not what will be left behind. What will be left behind is all of yourself that you gave to so many kids and, and your colleagues. And I know to me, you've always been someone that I could come to and get a straight answer, and I've always respected your opinion. I know my predecessor, John Retschlis, thought the world of you in the same way, and so you will be missed. You're irreplaceable. So, thank you for everything.
It has truly been my pleasure, and just one last thing, I'd like to thank the people of Rockland for entrusting me with the care and feeding of their children, which was mostly a very positive experience, and I appreciate that more than I can say, much as I appreciate the sentiments you've all expressed. It has truly been my pleasure.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Now onto much less heartfelt and much more procedural business, I guess. Under reports under tonight's agenda, we need to have four motions and votes to approve our financial reports for the month of April. We'll be looking for motions to approve the school department reports, the Rockland High School student activities reports, the Rogers Middle School student activity reports, and the cafeteria reports. We'll be entertaining four motions.
Four motions to approve.
Do we have seconds?
Four seconds.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, we have monthly reports for the March of April, and we'll be looking to approve 16 reports. Reports will be coming from art, athletic, computer technology, dean, English 9-12, foreign language, library, math 9-12, middle school, excuse me, middle school Mrs. Harris, middle school Mr. Griffin, music Mr. Piazza, radio station, science, social studies, daycare, and special education. We'll be entertaining 16 motions.
16 motions to approve.
Do we have 16 seconds?
16 seconds.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, our, as always, our very favorite thing to have on any item, any agenda item at our Rockland School Committee meetings, we have Curriculum Corner, and we're very lucky to have with us tonight our principal Jan Sheehan and teachers Kelsey Holbrook, Erin Michael, and Amanda McMillan. Welcome.
Thank you. Tonight, we will be presenting on our MTSS, a multi-tiered system of support in the area of ELA. Last year, you heard from the elementary principals the structure that we were planning in our school improvement plans to put in place, and we have carried it out this year because of three at Memorial Park, three at Estin, and three at Jefferson. So Kelsey Holbrook is the instructional coach for Tier 1 instruction. That's the whole class instruction. So she works with the teachers. And then Erin Michael is our reading specialist, and she works with students in small group instruction. And then Amanda McMillan is a reading specialist, and she's also a special education teacher, so she's our lead special education teacher. And the three of them work together with our student success team to see how we can put interventions in place to help support students so that we reduce the number of referrals for special education, and we, if students just need a small period of intervention, we can get that in place and move them along with the hopes of it not being a referral to special education. They may not be a special education student. They may not have a learning disability. They just might need more opportunity to learn. So that's the model that we put in place. So I'm going to turn it over to these three ladies to share what we did.
Thank you, Jan. Good evening, everyone. I, I think that our hope for tonight is that the school committee really feels like they understand this structure and that families watching at home understand how we're making decisions at school as well. So MTSS, let's see what we have here. All right, there's a little bigger picture of the symbol that represents the multi-tiered system of support. With so many acronyms in education, what we really need to know here is that it's a framework. It's a blue It's a blueprint for how we make our decisions in school to really see that growth in students. Everything we talk about in elementary school is all about that growth. If a student is growing, then that is okay. They all start at their different places. So as Jan mentioned, MTSS is really a blueprint for the academic side, the behavioral side, and the social emotional side. And we have these supports in place for those. But tonight, we're just going to talk about the academic side of literacy. I'm going to talk mainly just about that tier one and building a foundation. As we all watch the Phelps School be built, we have seen the time that's been spent building that foundation. And the same thing is so important in early literacy skills. And really, the foundation of that is that we have high-quality instruction and curriculum in all of our elementary schools. Half of that is the curriculum, which we have. We have programs that address all five areas of reading that are evidence-based. And the other half is that instruction. And our teachers, who are dedicating all of that great PD time this year to improving their practice. And we also have PLC time that goes in cycles for math and ELA. So I get to have the honor of helping support teachers, support their kids at that tier one level. Instead of me telling you what all that tier one looks like, we have a video of some teachers and kids. Let's see. Cue the video.
Our tier one instruction includes all five components necessary for students to become proficient readers. Then they can focus on the real purpose of reading, the comprehension, and the higher-level reading.
Let's hear what the students think about it all.
I like Hegarty because sometimes we have to write words, and I think that's really fun.
I like phonetons because we learn new trick words.
Thank you. And what does Hegarty help you with?
Learning.
Yeah, learning what?
Learning sounds and words.
Yeah.
And learning how to spell.
That's right.
And learning how to read better.
Fantastic.
I like the phonetons because I like to spell words.
One part of Hegarty is that we use hand motions to help us chop up words. When we hear individual sounds and words, it helps us spell them. All right, kids, repeat after me. And we're going to chop up syllables today, not individual sounds. Everybody say fantastic.
Fantastic.
Now chop it.
Fantastic.
Good. Discovery.
Discovery. Disco-oree.
This is a sneak peek at what early bird, one of our kindergarten assessment benchmark measures looks like. Sight word.
One. Be-buh.
Be-buh.
See-cuh.
Our goal is for all words to become sight words so that students can read with accuracy and automaticity.
Trick word is a word that's kind of hard to remember.
Okay, do you have an example, Dan?
Yeah, I do. Was.
And what makes it tricky?
The A doesn't say ah, or A says uh. And the S sounds z and says s.
So I see there's dots and hearts on it. What do the dots and the hearts mean?
The dots mean it's not the tricky part. The hearts mean it's tricky.
Oh, and you have to know it by heart. But what if you don't know it by heart? What could you do?
You could look in your student notebook.
Fantastic. And are you allowed to use those notebooks all day long to help you?
Yeah.
Thank you. In foundations, we tap out words. And some kids like to use popits to help them tap out each sound. Maddie, can you show us how you would tap out the word big?
Big. Bu-ee-guh. Big.
Students in kindergarten through second grade have these texts called kiosks that align with what they're learning in foundations. That way, they can be practicing reading the same phonics patterns that they're learning in foundations. First-grade friends, who can tell me why you mark a word in foundations? Louis, why do we mark words?
Just in case if there's anything wrong with it.
Yes, it can help us find our mistakes. So can everyone read me the word that you wrote on your board?
Hey, hey.
Good. Go ahead and mark up that. What kind of syllable is that? What kind of syllable?
Vowel consonant E.
Li-dashi.
That's right. Li-dashi, vowel consonant E.
So that was just a sneak peek at all some of the different components of our early literacy in tier one. And I'm going to turn it over to Erin to talk about the next step of tier two. Thank you. So in addition to all of that great tier one instruction, all students also receive benchmark assessments at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. Following each session of assessments, we have data meetings where we discuss students that might benefit from some tier two support or maybe some type of intervention.
Our tier one instruction includes all five components necessary for students to become.
There we go. So when students, we decide that students might benefit from some of that tier two instruction, what does that look like? So tier two instruction can look different depending on the kid, the needs, and the groupings that we have. So tier two instruction can take place in a classroom. It can be done by a general ed teacher. It could be in a small group session with a reading specialist or other staff. These are just over on the side. These are some of the interventions that we have available to us. We have a variety of interventions so we can hopefully match an intervention to students' needs. So the ones on the right are some of the ones that we have available to us right now. This is an example of a tier two student that we started progress monitoring, beginning in kindergarten. So he took his benchmark assessment, and we decided that he needed some intervention. So we progress monitored him every two weeks through first grade. When he came in for kindergarten, this assessment measured his phoneme segmentation fluency, which is his ability to hear a word and then tell you the sounds that he hears in a word. He came in in kindergarten and couldn't do that. He had zero. So we used some of those tier two interventions to help him and support him as well as continuing all of the tier one instruction that he got. And now, in the, at the middle of first grade, in January, he reached the benchmark for the end of year in first grade. So you can see that those interventions were matched well to him. He made progress. The same student entering first grade had a deficit in correct letter sounds. So that's his ability to hear a sound, map it to a letter, and then put letters together to read words. He came into first grade with zero correct letter sounds. And again, by the middle of first grade, in January, he was on benchmark for the end of first grade. So again, seeing that the interventions that we have are working. Our process is working. What this really shows is that with appropriate tier two interventions, he was able to make those gains that he needed. And this is why the structure is so important. So learning takes time, especially after a year of pandemic learning loss or more. So targeting interventions, progress monitoring, and designing instruction for these students is what's making the difference for us in our school. We have noticed now that we're starting to do our end-of-the-year benchmark testing that we're seeing those gains in students that we hadn't seen for a while. And we're seeing growth that we really haven't seen in a long time. So it's nice to see that the structure is working, and we are making those gains that we hope to see. And while Erin highlights the perhaps ideal situation for a student receiving tier two instruction, you're probably wondering, what happens when a student doesn't make this great progress? And perhaps despite these tier two interventions, they are still struggling. That is when a classroom teacher makes a referral to something called the Student Success Team, or the SST team. And what that is, is a multidisciplinary, school-based team that usually consists of the principal, the speech and language pathologist, the school psychologist, or anybody else in the staff whose knowledge would be helpful to help navigate the student's case. Before that team meets, though, before any of those colleagues come together, two things have to happen. The first is that the referring teacher meets with the literacy coach, in this case, meets with Kelsey, and they take a look at the student in the tier one curriculum. Kelsey offers a second pair of eyes on the student, perhaps offers recommendations, accommodations, to make sure that that student can have absolutely all things in place in the classroom to make them successful. The second thing that has to happen is that the referring teacher meets with us or another member of the SST team, and they develop something called the Tier Three Intervention Plan. So that's the most intensive, the last step in that multi-system, the multi-tiered system of support. Once all of that happens, six to eight weeks pass before we actually meet as a full SST team. And what that means is we look at all of the data from tier one, tier two, and tier three. And we make sure that we exhaust all possible avenues so we can say with confidence that we have extinguished every root and we've provided every resource for the student who is struggling. Looking at all the data, and again, driven by student work samples, we, as an SST team, ultimately come to three decisions. The first could be that the student's gaps and their knowledge has grown exponentially, and they're ready to rejoin the tier one curriculum. That's great. They can rejoin their tier one core classroom instruction. Perhaps the student's interventions in tier two or tier three are working, and we're starting to see that upward trending data. They can continue their tier two and tier three instruction. If perhaps we notice that the student is still not showing that progress we'd expect them to make, we might refer them to a special education evaluation. This is an example of something that, one piece of the several pieces of paperwork and documentation that comes from the SST team. But this is something new that we've implemented this year. And this is the student cover sheet, or the student face sheet, rather. And what it has is all of the student's information that will be critical for the success team to make these decisions about the student. So we have all of their report card scores and their meanings. We have their status as an English language learner, perhaps on a 504 plan. We have their tardies, aptices, all of that throughout their school history. We also have any office referrals for behavior management. We have their hearing and vision screening, and also their scores from their eye ready, those benchmark assessments that we administer and something called their DIBBLES scores. So we have all of their information right here in one cover sheet so the team can really make sure that we are making the best decisions and the most well-informed, data-driven decisions. We hope at the end of this process that all students are as eager and excited to read and towards literacy as this little child is. And to end on a happy note, this year at Memorial Park, we've had 19 students who have been referred to the Student Success Team after moving through all of the tiers of intervention. Of those 19 students, 11 of them were able to return to tiers two and three and work in that route to get their needs met. Of the remaining eight students, they were all referred by the team to be tested for special education. And all eight students qualified to receive special education services. So we have had a great success rate so far. And we're very much looking forward to implementing this in the years to come. If you have any questions or comments for us, we're more than welcome to hear them.
Sure. Questions and comments? Mrs. Maroni.
First of all, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. Second, are you getting feedback from parents? Are they liking this process? Is it easy for them to sort of stick with you and see where their child is going throughout the year?
So far, speaking from my experience, I would say yes. I've heard from a few of the parents that I've worked with that this ability to quickly see their students or their child's data and see exactly where they started and where they've ended has been really clear for them. So from my end, yes.
And the progress graph that you saw the example of of the students in our school, I would say we have about 80 that we're consistently progress monitoring throughout the year, not just those three times. So we have that much data to be able to show the parents as well, which I think really assures them for the growth. Because when they see their not student isn't making benchmark, but they see they're growing, we know we're moving.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Hennessy.
Great program. Obviously, it's a year, right? This is the second year of this. So I love data, which is great to see all of this. From a time perspective, and the other teachers that are helping you gather all this, how much time is that adding? Is it adding additional staff? Like, what's the reaction to needing to gather all this data to help make these cases? And I guess that's my first question.
Yes, I can speak to that. I do, not all, but a good amount of the progress monitoring for the students that we follow in our school. I also have, we have a para that is working with me. So she helps me do a lot of the progress monitoring, too. I do a lot of it on, students have like their win block, which is like their what I need block. And then one day in a cycle, it's their science day. So I get to take that day and do most of the progress monitoring then.
And then as far as staffing goes, this, the one addition was really the instructional coach position this year in each school, which allowed to have Erin being full-time working with these kids and me to help support the teachers. So I think down the road, we'd love to have the same system. But it's for math.
I have another question. This is for all grades, right?
Correct.
For all K through four. Do you see those that might have been put on an IEP before this was in place? Are they coming off IEPs? Are they going back into this multi-tiered system and getting the tier one and tier two?
That's a great question. That's an excellent question.
Because, right, it's first and second, I mean, you said kindergarten and first grade benchmarks, but the kids that are in third and fourth grade don't have that. So just curious how it's cycling through all grades.
For sure. This could be like a whole separate presentation. So I'm glad that you brought this up. But no, special education is actually not even a tier on its own. If we think of the multi-tiered system of support as here, special education is kind of its own different system of support. So if there's a student, say, coming in from preschool or kindergarten with an IEP already, you can be on an IEP and still go through this multi-tiered system of support for math or for behavior, for whatever area it is that you need support. With this, with this model so far, we're not so much finding that students are coming off of IEPs, but the students are not coming on to them as frequently as we were seeing before, if that makes sense.
I'm also.
Anyone else?
I was going to say thank you for the presentation.
I was going to say, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was really, I really like the system that you're using. It's very well thought out, very well organized, very, it looks great. What do you guys need for support? Because this looks great and a lot of work, and it sounds like the PD days have been really helpful. But is there anything else that you guys need to support you in doing this program?
For me, I mean, and personally, I would say there's the continued mentality of the importance of professional development and building in that time to make sure that our teachers get the training, the expertise, the knowledge on all of this stuff. Because it's one thing for us to stand here in front of you today, but we really need every member of our school knowledgeable on this and anyone working with students knowing how this process starts from start to finish. So just keeping that mentality of teacher training and teacher time in mind, I think, would be helpful for us.
And all of our teachers are being trained over two years in the science of reading. So structured literacy, they're all getting that knowledge. So that is helpful in itself, that we're not just relying on three people to have this intervention. We're relying on the classroom teachers as well.
And just to add to that, I think just that message of trust the process. If you hear parents who are having concerns, letting them know, we have a thorough, research-based plan in place, and to trust it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to confirm quickly, so there's a team at each of the elementary schools of you three.
Correct. Yep.
And then, is it the same process for the emotional, social-emotional health, like different tiers?
Yeah. For the most part, yes. There's tweaks in terms of the interventions, or you can speak to that, too, Jan, but...
So for social-emotional, yes. We have what we call the case conference. So we have a tier one and a tier three coach for that. Tier three referrals would be to our social-emotional program. But we meet every six days, this cycle, and talk about kids. And the nurse is part of that, too. So any students that may have gone to the nurse, you know, frequently, we're chatting and saying, what's the reason for this? What's going on? And we'll pull the classroom teachers. They'll come and talk to us as well. So we do. You have that system in place, too. Thank you.
Great. No, I mean, Jamie said it. I mean, data, we love data. And the face sheet, I really like the face sheet. I mean, I can imagine being a parent, coming into a parent conference and sitting down with my child's teacher and being able to see sort of a comprehensive, sort of where he's at or where she's at. And I imagine as a team, working together, you know, being able to see from different perspectives, whether it be, you know, the DIBBLs or anything that you might be doing, just having all that research and all that data right there at that snapshot point in time to sort of how to best sort of tailor that kid's experience and be able to get them the help that they need. And it seems like it's really working. And I was really glad to hear you say that you seem to be seeing progress that's based sort of what you experienced before the pandemic, sort of starting to get back to that. That makes me so happy to hear that. That's so great for our kids, for you guys. I think that's awesome.
Awesome. Yeah, it's very helpful.
Anything else? Great. Well, thanks so much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have some completed, well, a completed fundraiser. The Esten PAC ran an April calendar fundraiser that raised a substantial $6,430. Great job by everybody involved. Item B, under rolled business, we have a request for approval of the 2022-2023 Rockland High School Handbook with proposed changes, and this is a second reading. Dr. Cron, do you have anything to highlight or that you wanted to talk about with this?
No, I recommend that we adopt it.
Okay, so we'll be entertaining a motion to approve the 2022-2023 handbook as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, another very exciting topic, as always. Item C is our Phelps Elementary School update. Mrs. Davidson?
Not much to report. I would just like to mention that in the monthly reports that we get from the departments, it was noted from the music department that he is very much looking forward to not having music carts anymore, that he's going to actually have a space in the new elementary school for all the equipment. And it's not going to be a rotating schedule. It's going to be a very consistent place for the children for music, which I think is great. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up, item D, we have our COVID update. Ms. Hackett?
Thank you. Not much to report. Case activity reported as of today is a little bit down from last week. However, it's early, and nurses may be at home completing their data and updating the spreadsheet right now. But we're still experiencing a peak, a spike in the schools, and it does appear to be affecting faculty more than students at this point in time. We just came back from a conference where both the Commissioner of Public Health and the Education Commissioner have said that it is hitting in schools and hitting adults because of the decline in the booster and the kids' resistance is higher than many of the adults right now. And they anticipating us continuing to have staffing challenges for the remainder of the year. And then, they did also recommend that we do purchase and have on hand, ready for the fall, test kits and masks. And just begin preparing for that now because they're not sure they're going to have much relief money available for us come next fall going forward. So we're looking at that. Nurses and I are looking at that on Thursday.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Hackett? Okay. That being said, we move on to new business. And a couple of topics that I'm sure students and teachers will cheer to have us be talking about, which is annually the last day of school. So item A is the last day of school for approval for grades one to 12. And they're looking, the proposal is Wednesday, June 22nd. And it would be a half-day. Dr. Cron, anything to chat about with that?
Nothing to add.
Okay, so we'll be looking to approve the last day of school for this year as being Wednesday, June 22nd.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Item B is the last day of school for kindergarten, which would be proposed to be Wednesday, June 15th, 2022. And that would also be a half-day. We'll be looking to, a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next up, item C, under new business, we have some surplus property. Dr. Cron, anything you'd like to talk about or highlight?
No, I believe there's just one computer that's not working. It's being surplus.
Okay, very good. A little too, again, a motion to approve our surplus computer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Coming up, last on our, not last, but I'll, go ahead. Yeah, I think we got a couple of items swapped up. Actually, now that I look at it, I got the superintendent's report. So we'll skip over item seven. I think that's out of order. And we'll go to superintendent's report. We'll turn that over to Dr. Cron.
Thank you.